Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson, pledged by Councilmember Evans.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this very enjoyable evening to perform city business. We ask for your continued oversight of us and our staff as we continue to keep this a great community to live, work, perform business, and raise a family. We will continue to strive to keep this community an enjoyable place and a very friendly environment. We are, we ask for your protective hand for all our police officers, fire response individuals, and our city employees, to keep them all safe as they continue to work for all city residents. We also extend this protection to our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them all home safe every day. We also want to express our thanks for all the rain that we've had the past two weeks. The moisture was not only allowed for the great growth of the wildflowers, but we are now seeing, but it also gives us relief from the drought conditions. We have been in this past for a few years. We've enjoyed the beautiful snow draped on the series of mountains around us. Everyone was so taken with this beauty that every, everyone seemed like anyway, that was out taking pictures and enjoying this beautiful, beautiful display. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
You have seven members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Does anyone have any announcements or current events? We'll start on the right.
My right, my right or your right?
My right.
All right. I had the pleasure of pulling our A.J. Kids Idol contestants and everything in the parade this past weekend, I guess it was. Had a great showing. It was great to get out there and see the people enjoying the weather finally. It dried up a little bit and just want to commend the, the chamber for doing that and also the city staff for all the coordination of all the traffic and the barricades and everything. It was a great job.
Okay. This past weekend over at the farmer's market at Earthheart Park, through a grant from our local Allstate and the CD, the Community Development Corporation, along with the city, I was passing out house numbers, which kind of sounds like a weird thing to do, and it was, but once people realized that it was a safety issue, it was free, the word spread. It was amazing. I had two great big boxes and I had one wall plaque left and a few odds and ends numbers. So it went over really well. Robin and I attended this past week the neighborhood meeting at Rancho Mirage, which is like Baseline and Cortez. That neighborhood in particular is, the crowd that was there anyways was almost a year-round residence. It wasn't one of our winter visitor type parks. We had a really good communications going back and forth on safety issues, what they can do, and how they can be more active in the community. This weekend coming up is the Blues Festival, free, ten to eight. Bring a chair, have some fun, listen to some great music. It's always crowded and a lot of fun. There will be vendors and food and just have a great weekend.
Yeah, I get, first off, I want to say thank you to the, I'll say not only the staff, but also everyone that worked on the Lost Dutchman facilities or event at the fair, rodeo grounds, not the fairgrounds, rodeo grounds. And even though we kind of had a little wet of a Friday and everything that I had out got wet too, but Saturday and Sunday was very well attended and the bleachers were fairly active during the time for the rodeo, so it was very, very good event that occurred. This coming weekend is, those of us that have been, I would say raised on the farm or have been around farm equipment, it's an opportunity to see some of the old tractors out there working very hard as they're doing their pole and their shows. So come out and enjoy, I'm gonna say the John Deere putt-putt, and it's an opportunity to share some experiences in the past.
What time? Times, times on that?
Oh, I think it starts at 10:00 in the morning.
Okay. At the rodeo park?
Yeah. Robin?
Yeah. Instead of where I've been, I'd kind of like to tell you where the city's been. The 2018 fact sheet is out. The city has received 1.5 million dollars in grants in 2018. They have issued over 4,000 business licenses. The library checked out almost 168,000 books during 2018. The Parks Department took care of 2,050 acres of open space and trails as well as maintaining 152 acres of parkland. They gave 1,092 swim lessons and served the seniors 17,287 meals. This is outstanding. The city has been very busy this year, and this doesn't even speak to some of the departments at all.
Right.
This is just a few of them. So I'm very proud to be a member of this council, to be a citizen of this community that is working so hard for the people who live here. Thank you.
Robert, did you hear me?
I just wanted to thank the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce and the city for coming together, collaborating the Lost Dutchman Parade. That was very well attended. It went very smoothly. I know some of the businesses were a little bit concerned about how to get in to their locations. It worked well. Communication went well. Cleanup went well. Just want to thank all the, lot of volunteers put these, helped to put these city events on, and so we always want to make sure and thank those volunteers and our public works. It just, it went really, really well. And then we have something, Your Honor, is this my time to announce this?
Not quite.
Okay. Then I'll wait.
We're gonna come back to you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I was writing when Gail was talking. Gail, this weekend is not blues. This weekend at the music festival is just a mix of all music, right? In two weekends is the blues and brews. Right. So this music festival this weekend is gonna be a mix. Last year it was pretty much bluegrass, but I think you're gonna see a mix and there's gonna be some local performers too, which we want to encourage. And like I said, we want to have one of these every weekend. So this week is at Earthheart Park, and then the following weekend at Flatiron is gonna be the brews and blues, which had our, it's be the third one for it. This is the second time at our location. So everybody come out to it.
Your Honor, what time is the music festival at Earthheart?
I think it starts at noon.
Right? Ten to eight. Ten to eight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if you can't find parking, just keep driving around until you do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And I also want to thank everyone associated with Lost Dutchman Days. The SMPC does an amazing job out there. And one thing that happened on Saturday, there was like a perfect storm for bad traffic. Not only did we have the people going up the trail for the snow, but since it basically got rained out on Friday, all of those people came back. We also had the Renaissance Festival. The museum had an event, and there was a wedding going on out beyond there too. So the traffic was not good, and the city is meeting about that. They're gonna have an after-meeting to try to make sure that that doesn't happen again. What went wrong? Is there any other way we can reroute something and possibly bring the highway, the state Department of Safety involved too, because Highway 88 belongs to them? So we are aware there were problems and we are gonna try to fix it for, for future years. So, so now we're gonna come back to Krista.
Okay. Your Honor, if I may, I also, I meant to mention in regards to the parade, there was a competition in the parade for floats. And so the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce has a link posted. It's a Survey Monkey link with floats that had entered the competition. I don't remember the theme. It was prospecting for gold or something gold this year. But vote, the, the link is on the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce website. It's also on their Facebook page. They've shared it with some Facebook pages, so go and vote for the, the best float. There's gonna be a rotating plaque or trophy, I believe, for that as well. And then finally, we have a, a special award. This was our second annual Apache Junction Holiday Decorating Competition. And this came out of the focal point committee here in Apache Junction. The group decided that we wanted to get Apache Junction to be a go-to place for Christmas time. And so we started a competition for local organizations and businesses to decorate and light up their, their business or outside of their building at Christmas time. And we had a competition and the community voted, and we have a winner. And I believe the winners are here today. That was a Little Prospector preschool won. And so, Your Honor, if we could, you would do us the honors? We have a rotating plaque for the winner with their name and the year, and they get to keep this plaque for, until the next competition.
So yeah, kind of like the Midwest does, we want to have, you know, the whole town involved. Last, the first time it was just a trail, but that's not fair because the city of Apache Junction is more than the Apache Trail. And so if we could have the Little Prospector come up and receive this. And they set the bar pretty high, so next year to try to outdo them. And that's the idea. We want everybody to try to outdo each other.
Well, we have a graphic designer on our side.
Really? They kind of cheated. They just admitted to cheating with the graphic designer, so.
Head drop.
Do you guys want to say anything?
He had to do it because we're married.
So it was a good job, and I, I voted for him, by the way.
So I don't know if anybody had a chance to see what they had done. It was a train depot. They had cars out there. If you guys would like to describe it a little bit, what you had done, it was awesome.
They don't want to talk.
Well, Jay actually turned our stucco building into what looked like brick walls with some of the design work that he did. And he had Tom Hanks out there from the movie Polar Express. I was a little disappointed that he didn't bring the real guy out, but I think we could have actually really locked it in for the next 10 years if we had the real guy out there, but.
Die Hard is a Christmas movie, so somebody will try to get Bruce Willis out there next year, so.
Yeah. So, yes. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, City Managers report, and I think we have some special guests tonight.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much, Bryant Powell, City Manager. We're really neat to see the Little Prospector get that. There was a ton of great work, and Jay Ray is very talented. He used to work for us. We lost him. But I am pleased to hear of all the great things that you're able to see of 2018, and thank Councilmember Barker for that recognition. Staff really, really means a lot, and we really appreciate that, that recognition. Yeah, so this Thursday will be the debrief on both Lost Dutchman Days Marathon, as well as Lost, Lost Dutchman Days Parade and Rodeo. And that's where we debrief on all the, the things that went well and, and how can we improve. And from a city manager perspective, as we have a goal to bring investment and economic development, there's nothing more than positive impressions. And Vice Mayor, you mentioned the snow, and I think all four million from, from Phoenix came over. They all wanted to see Four Peaks. And I honestly, in my time here, have never seen such thick white snow up there. So it, it did, it did cost some opportunities for growth, and so we will be talking about that and, on Thursday.
So Bryant, if I could interrupt, I think Captain Freeman told me there were probably 30,000 to 40,000 more extra people in the city that weekend, and there was not one incident at the roundabout. It handled them all.
Something. Yeah, that's a.
Because they all avoided it.
I, I spent 20 minutes trying to get across 88 and then gave up and turned north in traffic.
It really was clogged up.
See, they avoided it.
We, we, we thank everyone for bringing that. We, we know, we know that we have Saturday afternoon of the parade every year when folks go from the parade to the, to, or on Saturday from the parade to the, to the rodeo grounds, and then it's always, it's gonna be always an effort. So, so the other thing that happened this weekend was a household hazardous waste event was last Saturday. I'm very pleased to be able to report, but we will give a full briefing to the council and to the community. But this is the first time we've done one in six months, and so we're able to do it now budget-wise every six months. So far, the reports have come back very positive. We, we did some major changes with some safety measures out on Baseline Road. Love any input that you may have heard as well on that. Heather Hodgman and her team, and Captain Freeman and his team, and Lieutenant Parker did a great job of coordinating the effort there and kept everyone safe, and I look forward to seeing those numbers. And I wanted to say a huge thank you out to our community service workers and Penal County Court Worker Program. You are familiar with that program. This, this group really does provide a huge back, back help in support of, and just today this happened, this was an email from Kelly Martin, our Park Ranger Supervisor, to Glenn's crew, which is the Penal County Court Worker Program. Just want to send my appreciation to Glenn's crew. We're right now down some park attendants and trash is getting a little bit backed up across, across our different facilities. My Rangers and the Day Crew have been trying to get to it, but we weren't able to catch up because of different events and other duties. Glenn had heard, no one, no one's commanding, no one, Glenn had just heard this was going on. He was shorthanded and asked if he could assist, and with some of the load, and, and we were able to make that happen. And just under an hour, that extra help was able to empty all the trash at Prospector before they were called, before they were called to another job. This help was greatly appreciated. I want to make sure we continue to know that that great effort is going on. I appreciate your support in that effort, you know? That's a, that's a very unique program, and I, I want to thank you for that. And Liz Leggaback also added her thanks as well. And then lastly, Councilmember Barker and Councilmember Rizzi and I were able to attend the last Penal Partnership Breakfast. It was all about water. And then, and the discussion mainly was about the Penal County Active Management Area. And for us to be able to have had Frank, over the years, teach us about the Phoenix Active Management Area, which is what we're in, the difference between those buckets of water and how Apache Junction has been preparing for a very, very long time for surface water, groundwater, how our surface water treatment efforts have been able to prepare for our efforts for growth. Thank you, Your Honor. That concludes my report. It was a good breakfast. It was good to be able to do that.
So do you want to introduce?
Yeah, so we'll jump right in. Let's go ahead and have, if we can introduce Gustavo and Laura. And Gustavo has a few words. We're really happy to have Laura here with us. She's the CEO of Horizon Healthcare, and right around the corner, and big partner in so many of the Earthheart Park efforts, Gustavo.
Gracias. Good evening, Mayor Sertie, council members. Bryant, always a pleasure to come and be able to come and say a few words. I think the last time I was here was I had made a decision to take an appointment elsewhere in the greater downtown Phoenix metro area, and I learned quickly what a bad, bad mistake that was. And so I think what I would like to do before I introduce our new Chief Executive Officer at Horizon Health and Wellness is basically note that I've also gone through an anniversary of nine years since I moved out to Apache Junction. And I've certainly found this to be an amazing place, not only for myself and, and my, my professional work, but also for my family, who also call Apache Junction home now. And I, you know, I just really want to note some of the wonderful things, Councilmember Barker, that you brought up right now, that really speaks to what an amazing community this is. And I, I've got to just note on the record how grateful I am to be here, and I'm particularly grateful for the partnerships that Horizon Health and Wellness, formerly Mountain Health and Wellness, have been able to form over the years. And I know we were talking about a, an event that's happening this weekend, the Superstition Mountain Music Festival. That's all based on partnerships that have taken place, but most of those partnerships are because of the relationship with the city of A.J. and particularly the city of Apache Junction, and for that I'm very grateful. And so in those nine years, definitely seen a lot of changes happen in the area of behavioral health, integrated healthcare, and being a part of a rather amazing story and organization that has gone through some very dynamic changes in that period of time. I'm grateful that I've been able to withstand that, and there's a number of people in this room that are also a big part of that story. But the most recent change that's happened is one that I'm, again, very happy to report, led, led to the, the onboarding and hiring of Laura Larson Huffaker, who came to us from, I believe, 12 years as Executive Director of La Frontera Impact. And she has done a phenomenal job in that role, and the fact that she chose to apply and then was selected as Chief Executive Officer, I think speaks a lot to the, the good fortune of Horizon Health and Wellness, and also, of course, Apache Junction and the multiple, the multiple counties and cities that Horizon has facilities in. So I would like to introduce you all to our new Chief Executive Officer, Laura Larson Huffaker.
Thank you all for having us here. It's really great to meet everybody. I, as Gustavo said, I was at La Frontera Impact. I was actually there for over 20 years, but Executive Director for 12. And although I won't say what city they were in, I was never invited to a council meeting, so this is, this is a first for me. And it just speaks to the integration between the businesses and the council and the businesses that, in the community, so I really appreciate that. I think that's great, that the council invests that kind of time and, and attention to the local businesses. So I had actually come years ago to the grand opening of the facility here in Apache Junction when it was Mountain Health and Wellness or Superstition, I can't remember which it was at the time. But I was there when the grand opening. In fact, I had just, at Impact, bought our first building, and so I came actually to get ideas on building design and how to decorate it and how to set it all up from there. And who knew that years later I would actually be here? So I've been at Horizon Health and Wellness for two months now, so I'm kind of still getting my, my bearings, but it's a wonderful organization and very excited to be able to be in this role and serve the community of Apache Junction and our other areas. So, thank you.
We're glad to have you.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
And this meeting is recorded, and this will be seen by hundreds of thousands of people.
Glad you didn't say that before I started speaking.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Thanks.
So Bryant, we were supposed to have another special?
That is correct. So Denny Barney, East Valley Partnership Executive had had an, had asked for an opportunity to come, and we would love to have him. It appears that he did have something going on over the issue and could have been held up in traffic, so.
So we'll try to have him back.
We'll have him back, yeah, yeah.
And East Valley Partnership, they, we are involved in that, and they do a lot of planning out here, and they're an advocate, a voice for the whole East Valley, so.
Yep.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I forgot the most important thing, if I might.
Okay.
I became a great grandmother yet again today. Baby boy, 10 pounds plus, 24 inches long, he's already half grown.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Consideration of a code of conduct applicable to the council board and commission members. Who will kick this off?
You want to, Bryant? I'll take it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last night, there were suggested changes by Councilmember Rizzi. I think I've captured all of them. I believe Mr. Busby has put on the screen today's version, and I also provided you an electronic version as well as a hard copy. Section one includes everything that Councilmember Rizzi wanted stricken. Section four, C, and now I know what LTE means, so that was added in two different spots under C, and that's also under section five. Section eight, the A was stricken as requested. I did revise some of the council members' verbiage on the second sentence. It says, "Electronic devices at meetings may be used to conduct the business at hand, however," and that's all the new language, and then the following phrase, I won't read it, but that's the same. So some of the verbiage had to be changed on what you said last night, just some adjectives, but other than that, it's pretty much the same context. And then under new B, the language is set on the screen. Members should be aware that nonverbal body language is viewable by the audience and may indicate their opinion or be in reaction to comments from another member or speaker. And then the, the Powell amendments, section 10 and section 17, instead of shall, it is now should. And that is it.
Is there any more discussion on this? So, uh, so I don't have to call for a motion, but we are voting on this tonight, right? So I'll.
Yes.
Call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the proposed code of conduct for city council and board and commission members be approved, be approved. Period. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion on the next set of upcoming council dates?
Is this gonna be a record of completion?
Your Honor?
No.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 p.m. and a work session at 7:00 p.m. be held on Monday, March 18th, 2019, and an executive session at 6:00 p.m. and a work session at 7:00 p.m. be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, in the City Council Chambers Conference Room and the City Council Chambers at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
And unless someone else has anything else to bring up, then.
No call to the public?
There's no call to the public tonight, so we'll be adjourned.